I'll just remind you, page 45 here. We're good, Cherie? Andrew, we're okay?
Yes, sir.
Good morning. Today is Wednesday, August 5th, 2020. Notice has been given of a regular meeting of Commissioners Court of Grimes County, Texas. We, it is 9:00 AM. We're at 114 West Buffington Avenue in Anderson, Texas. We're calling the meeting to order. The first item in that call to order is invocation, followed then by the pledge to the US flag, and then the Texas flag. Would you rise, please, and join me in prayer? Father, we thank you for this day and the blessings of this life. We thank you for the opportunity to serve in whatever capacity that might be. And Father, as this court meets this day, we would ask that you would watch over us. Share your wisdom with us. Help us to make decisions that are wise and true to your will, also wise and true to the will of the citizens of this county. We thank you for this opportunity. Father, for those that are not able to be with us this day, we ask that you watch over and keep them. For those that have experienced the loss of loved ones, Father, we ask that you be with them during this time of mourning, but let them have joy in the memories of those that they love so much and the situations that they've played in one another's lives. Father, we ask that you be with those that are ill at this time with the COVID and whatever disease or ailment that they may have, Father, that can recover quickly and just rejoin us and be back to their normal health. Father, thank you for loving us so much. Forgive us, dear God, when we fall short, and it's in your son's precious name we pray. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible. Thank you. We can be seated, please. Vanessa Brzezinski, County Clerk, do you have any notices of public comments?
No, sir, I did not receive any.
Commissioners, do you have any public comments that you'd like to make? Commissioner Walker?
Good morning, everyone. I would like to thank Grimes County and all of our supporters, our partners, Texas A&amp;M Extension and Strengthening Families Brass's Valley, for the wonderful book drive we had yesterday. It was truly a blessing that we were able to serve approximately 550 families. We were even visited by the king of the Texas Renaissance Festival, who came out to greet all of the people as they came through the line. And we just want to say thank you to everyone.
Thank you. I also have a public comment I'd like to make, that Grimes County has our Emergency Management Services Coordinator, Mr. David Lilly, has worked very hard to coordinate COVID-19 test site walk-up sites. And he has put that together for the entire county. And we appreciate his effort. Just very quickly, those dates are coming up, next Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday, August 10th, 11th, and 12th. And this information is also posted on the county's website for your review and awareness. The time is going to be 8:00 AM through 4:00 PM. However, they said if you're in line at 4:00 PM, you will still be tested. So they'll have a cutoff, but as long as you're in line, they will not shut the testing down. There are going to be two locations. One location is going to be in Navasota, and that's the Progressive Outreach Center at 615 West Virginia Street. If you don't know where that is, that's the voting location for Precinct 3. Is that correct? Voting location of Precinct 3. Again, the Progressive Outreach Center. Also in Anderson, Texas, it will be at the American Legion Hall, or now better known as Anderson City Hall. And that's at 415 Hill Street. And that, the hall is just located right behind the Anderson-Chiro Elementary School and admin offices. Four quick points: no appointment needed, no doctor's orders or prescription needed. Bring a photo ID and a cellphone. And finally, and as important as all of it, no charge. So that's going to be next Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday. This bulletin has been posted on the county's website. So again, David Lilly, thank you for your efforts in coordinating that for the entire county.
I have two announcements. The Food Pantry in Anderson will be open tomorrow to distribute food to the people in the county that need it. And on the 16th of this month, which is the week from this coming Sunday, we will be having a blood drive at St. Mary's Catholic Church from 8:00 until 1:00 on Sunday. And we will be serving breakfast, but not our normal breakfast. It will be a little change of menu.
Very good. Are there any other public comments? Hearing none, we will move to consent agenda items, number three and number four. Consent agenda item number three, consider and take action to approve the treasurer's list of claims and bills. Agenda item number four, consider and take action to approve payroll. Commissioners, do you have any comments or questions on any items or issues regarding agenda item three and four?
I did have one question, I think I did. I wanted to ask, what is a viper scrubber? Anybody know what it is?
I believe that is the, something that they just got in that'll, when they're cleaning the floors, it has a squeegee behind it. And what is it?
Okay, and, okay, it was under COVID-19. I'm just checking.
Yeah, that's what it is.
Okay.
And I think it's just, it's more or less a descriptive name of, like a backpack, oh goodness, sanitizer. This is a, when I first thought I would call it sanitation, we had to clean it or something, but no, it's a brand, a brand name, style name.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you very much.
Anything else? Commissioners, any comments, questions? Is there a motion?
I don't have any, but I'll make the motion that we approve the consent agenda items three and four.
There's a motion before the court on consent agenda items number three and number four by Commissioner Walker, seconded by Commissioner Cox. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We'll go to agenda item number five, Commissioner Precinct 2, David Obianski. Consider and recognize the following employees for their years of service. Chad Mallett, five years of service. Good job. And also, we have Emily Robinson, 20 years of service. Ms. Robinson, are you out there?
Yes, she's out.
Good morning.
Good morning. We could not get the car in the color that you wanted for your service award?
We got the Rolex.
We didn't, we couldn't find one that was there either, so. Commissioner?
We have a beautiful plaque for you, though.
It is beautiful.
Twenty years, and thank you for your service.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Let's bring Judge Loughlin up here. Judge, would that be okay? Judge, come on up.
That's as big as it gets.
Congratulations.
Thank you for the job well done, Emily.
Have a great day, everyone.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner.
You're welcome.
We'll now move to agenda item number six, Grimes County Appraisal District, Mark Benneke. Did we cancel that? We tabled that?
He's here.
Oh, he's here. All right. Mark Benneke, Shannon Sanders. Agenda item number six, receive, review, and discuss chief appraiser's submission of appraisal role effective tax rate, rollback tax rate, and other tax rate adoption material. Good morning.
Morning, sir.
Fine. Y'all look terribly familiar. We have a little bit. We've extended the distancing.
Yes.
Can I have the geeky stuff this morning? This is on the front page. This is your certified numbers for 2020. We got that done on July 21st, which I'm very proud. They, you got a good staff over there at appraisal district. I don't want to brag on the staff that I work with, is that with all this COVID pandemic, nobody missed a day. We didn't have to shut down the complete office. Now, we did shut down the lobby, and we restricted people's access, but staff was there every day, and we continued working with mail notices on time, and we certified and networked almost all the protests timely. And I'm real proud of that. And I don't think a whole lot of appraisal districts in the state can say that, because I know a lot of them have the certified, has the, you know. You have a good staff over there. And for the board directors, their decision to put that glass up front, that really saved us on our front counters, because we were able to have the public come in. We had the glass from about four inches off the counter all the way up to the ceiling. And so we were able to help the public through that. And so that was a good call on their part, and I'm thankful for that. Okay, in your packet here, here's your certified numbers. They were sent, you know, over to the county on the 21st. And I tried to give you some information that I thought that y'all would be interested in. On the second page is the totals taxable from 2019 to 2020. You got a 9.38% increase. And on the page behind that, it's going to be two, well, four pages. It's the totals. So that's going to be land improvements, ag, industrial, then all the exemptions, all the geeky stuff. But, you know, really, the number that's really, you know, you're interested in is the bottom line number is what you put your tax rate against to get your levy. Then I was thinking, you might want to know about the, you know, the top taxpayers in your county. I think I could ask that. So I have, that's going to be the third, you know, sheet, kind of blue and white. NOV, National Allwell, WARCO, where your top taxpayer, followed by Tanaska. And then it kind of breaks it down into commercial and then personal property. That's some breakdowns that the state requires. And then on the back page, I don't know if you're interested in it or not. I just attached it to a black and white sheet. Talk about new improvement. I always get asked about, well, how many new improvements? How much new taxable stuff? And there's a section at the bottom, and then on the top of the second page, that has a breakdown of residential, commercial, expiring abatements. You still have a couple of abatements out there. And as those percentages change each year, as they decrease, that new value comes over the tax row, and that's calculated in the effective tax rate as new value. And there's a number there for that. So on the appraisal district side, it was a very good year. The taxpayers, we had quite a few, and we had telephone conferences that seemed to go well. The ARB, they had no problems coming in. During the hearings, we had the room situated that everybody was six feet apart, including the taxpayers. Board members and staff wore masks during the meetings, taxpayers. It was up to them. If they so choose to wear a mask, you know, they could or they could not. So it was a good year.
Have any questions for me?
I'd just like to say this is a very thorough, outstanding report. I like that.
Thank you.
Judge, and Commissioner, I, Judge, you may have already had the conversation with Mr. Benneke, but the collection rate may be a question that you guys need to consider as you formulate the budget. I don't know if you've had that conversation or not. Because we, I think we bumped it up to like 98% previously, and I'm just wondering if that's realistic and circumstantial.
Are you talking about anticipated or actual?
No, no, no. Anticipated for the, because we, I think Judge LaMond changed that from 95 to 98 or something to that effect. I wonder if you guys need to take a look at it.
I can answer that for you. The Texas Legislature has solved your problem. They have specified in law that you have to take the previous three years, the lower of the three previous years' actual collections. So that decision does not rest with Commissioners Court.
Thanks, Mike.
And Shannon, go over that. Do you want to hear about effective tax rates or no new, no new revenue rate? I don't know why they changed the terms. It has been a wild year in the adult tax business, all the changes in the legislature and the virus this year.
Well, I'd just say I appreciate your patience and Shannon's patience, particularly Shannon's, in dealing with me, because we've gone through the numbers more than once. And we'll probably go through the numbers a couple more times, but I appreciate the patience in trying to help me understand them better and have a better feel for it.
He has been on the phone with the attorneys and a bunch of people trying to, you know, decipher all these new laws. Shannon?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Commissioners. Shannon Sanders, I'm the Assistant Chief Appraiser at the Grimes County Appraisal District. And I have some tax rate information for you. If this year wasn't bad enough, legislature last session changed lots of laws about calculating tax rates, changed the terminology. If you look at the sheet called Introducing a New TNT there handed out to you, that's a form created by the Texas Comptroller's Office. It just goes over the new rates and the new terminology, where we used to say effective tax rate forever, and I'll probably say it for another 10 years. That is now the no new revenue tax rate. Where we used to use low back rate, that is now the voter approval tax rate. Basically, the rates I'm going to give you in your TNT packet are highlighted on that cover page. The no new revenue tax rate is a calculated tax rate that would provide the taxing unit with about the same amount of revenue it received in the year before on property taxed in both years. And again, that's, you may hear me just call it the effective tax rate. That's on your cover sheet. I've calculated that rate for you. The voter approval tax rate is a calculated maximum tax rate allowed by law without voter approval. And that's also on your cover sheet there. So if y'all have any questions about any of this, I could probably spend two hours talking about all this, these different laws and changes. Our office, you know, just give me a call, and we can meet and talk about the different terminology and some of that other stuff. The packet there, I call this the TNT packet, which means truth in taxation. And the highlights are the no new revenue tax rate is .501060. And the voter approval tax rate is .551976. So what that does is it kind of sets you some parameters on adopting your rate. What you'll, what you'll need to do is consider this information and come back later this month and propose a tax rate. Also have a sheet in here. So just going through this, we've already given you the certification of the appraisal role. We did that on July 21st of 2020. That was something that's previously submitted to the governor body. We've also given you the grand totals reports there, just if you are interested in any of that stuff. A bunch of numbers, but it breaks down minerals and personal property and land improvements and exemptions, and all kinds of goodies there for you. So we use those totals to calculate these rates on these worksheets. And these worksheets are what's required by law to calculate the tax rate. So if you look at the last page of your worksheet there, the page that Mark has signed there, you know, it breaks down your no new revenue rate, your voter approval rate, and so on there. The page that everybody likes to see is that calculation worksheet there. It's my spreadsheet where I've given you some rates. In column one, I went out and told you what the certified value was, and last year's stoppage rate, and then gave you your levy or your revenue there. And in the other columns, I'm giving you, okay, well, if you adopt last year's rate, here's how much revenue you raise. If you adopt the no new revenue rate in column three, here's how much revenue you raise. If you adopt the voter approval tax rate, which I've been ordered by Commissioners Court to use 1.08 this year, it's in column seven. That's how much revenue you generate with that rate. And then column four, I went out and hand calculated the rate at 1.035, which is the rate that would normally be used if we wasn't under a disaster. So I have all those rates for you. I have your total tax levy, and then we use 96% this year. That's your estimated percent collected. But you can plug in 97, 98, whatever number you want to use there to get you to your net current tax on the next to the last line. The last line on that spreadsheet is the difference between last year's revenue and this year's revenue if you used one of those rates. And then you can just, if you, if y'all have another rate that you would like me to calculate revenue with, I would be glad to do that. So where we're at right now, we're just presenting this information to you for you to review. And we would come back at a later date here in August and propose a rate. And then we would post that proposed rate in the newspaper, and then come back and sometime probably in September, before September 30th, and adopt that rate.
Shannon, can you clarify something for me? I misspoke when I was talking about the anticipated collection rate. I was speaking about the wanted indebtedness debt right for entities that have debt. The county doesn't have any debt. So I misspoke.
Yeah, for taxing units that have debt, the legislature has gone out and given us a formula to calculate the anticipated collection rate. Grimes County doesn't have any debt, so there is no, it's irrelevant for Grimes County.
I appreciate that. And the only reason I brought that up is that it stuck out in my mind, and I'm not sure who all was on the commission or who was aware of the change. At one point, we went, I think it was from 95 to 98. And given folks' concerns about what the collection may be, I just raised that issue for you all to ask any questions you may have about it. It just stood out to me.
And we did go from 95 to 98 when we did that.
Last I looked, we were in the mid 97s. Now, that is on current collections. So your fiscal year 2019, that would be the current collections. In other words, that'd be the 2019 collection percentage. Well, there's also some delinquents we're collecting. We're collecting delinquent years, and we're also collecting penalty and interest. So you will actually collect over 100% of that number if you roll in prior delinquent years, and then certainly P and I, penalty and interest. Anybody that pays their tax after January 31st, they have penalty and interest added to their bill.
And as you and I discussed on Monday, that revenue, or that tax revenue has a tendency to come in daily, at least weekly, when people ask they pay, so.
Shannon, can you repeat the no new revenue tax rate that you?
The no new revenue tax rate is .501060. Now, I'd like to point out one other thing. On this spreadsheet I gave, I've still got preliminary stamp on there. There is different interpretations of the law coming in almost daily. It's just like everything else with COVID. This stuff changes almost daily or hourly. And you have, we have different firms across the state, law firms, that are, have different interpretations of this new law that has come in. So I'm still going to put the preliminary stamp on a lot of this stuff, but I wouldn't anticipate any major changes. But for instance, I discussed some numbers with you Monday. I did these last night, and they've changed since Monday. A fraction of a fraction. It's not anything major. I came in this morning and ran the worksheets again. These worksheets that I gave you were printed off this morning, and they're still hot. And they were the same number that I calculated last night, so I was thankful about that. It's been a rough year this year for really everything, but TNT has been wrecked this year. I didn't think I was going to be able to make it to court today. I kind of chickened out yesterday afternoon, and then I changed my mind after staying last night, being a little more comfortable with it. But I just want to let you know that preliminary is still on there. Just maybe for a few more days, until we get some more clarification from some of the law firms across the state.
On that note, could I ask that thing, could the Commissioners Court tell you, hey, no, we feel better than 95? Or is that a number that's subject to them requesting that you insert into the spreadsheet?
Yes, and Jesse and I have discussed that. It's a simple calculation. I've got the levy at 100 for you. And then I've got, right below it, I've got the 96%. And you would just take 96% of the total levy if you want to propagate it that way.
I'll share that with you.
That's all right. Valid question.
Shannon, on column four, it says voter approval tax rate, and that's the three and a half percent?
Correct. Yes.
Am I understanding that the voter, that the, well, it hasn't had an election?
No.
Type thing, and the voters have to vote on that?
The only way you would have to have an election would be is if you went over column seven. Column four is just a calculated number that I calculated for you. It's, you're not going to find that on this calculation worksheet.
And if we went to column four and we used the .526933 tax rate, that would be a true tax cut for the citizens of the county.
Yes, sir. If you look at column one, the rate last year was 530261.
Right.
And column four would be 526933.
Correct.
Court, I would just like to say, these guys have been working really, really hard to do this, because I, they thought I don't have to do it, they do. But the, my listserv has been blown up the last 10 days with these tax assessors trying to figure out how to do this. Because like he says, somebody interprets it one way, somebody else, somebody else, and they're all confused. So these guys have done an awesome job to get this ready for you guys.
Yes.
Thank you.
And to get the certified numbers almost a week early, and that's remarkable.
Certification was a challenge. If you're also, if you have an AR appraisal review board that is a little leery about having live hearings, then not much you can do about it. And you just, it would be a certified estimate versus a certified... certified estimate versus a certified. We had them this year, all except, there's seven accounts in here, but we still have outstanding.
This is so exciting. What I can't understand is why so few people come to your annual audit review and board meeting.
Our board of directors meeting.
Board of directors, yeah. To my knowledge, I was the only one there on the outside, so. But it was exciting. Any other questions, commissioners?
I just wanted to thank them for always providing good insight for us and the work that goes into it, and then with the termination, the terminology change, we're going back and forth looking, you know, that kind of helped complicate it a little bit more. And so I just appreciate it, and we'll give you a call for any concerns that I have.
Absolutely. If you dig into this thing and have any questions, feel free to call.
Thank you, Shannon.
Thank you, sir.
All right. That will set those numbers aside. We will now go to agenda item number...
Seven.
My whole bunch knocked it out. Yeah, agenda item number seven, Grimes County Building Maintenance Manager Al Peeler. Give us an update, please, on the ongoing projects. First, the Grimes County Courthouse. Second, the Grimes County Jail. And third, then the Justice Center.
Good morning. Um, Grimes County Courthouse, we have completed the exterior with approval of the change order. We'll be moving in the interior tonight. Scaffolding will be coming down August 17th. A long time without. But besides that, everything went well. We had some issues that I wasn't happy with. They kind of missed some spots. They come back, did everything. The engineer is, is happy with it, and I'm happy with it. I'm happy to move on.
What date was that, the scaffolding coming down?
August 17th. That's it, that's all I have right on the courthouse. Unless there's any other questions. Grimes County Jail, controls, we're waiting on two major controls to come in. We plan on starting at the end of August, starting May.
Would you advise the court what the controls are associated with?
Controls is the HVAC systems so that we control the committee in the building, and we can control the, this room gets too hot, this one gets too cold, we can adjust in the controls and adjust the unit to send proper air percentages.
And then one of the real values of having those controls put into the HVAC system is that we then can control the humidity, therefore we can eliminate once and for all the mold issues.
Yes, with the little adjustment to staff not leaving doors open and stuff like that, yes.
And you said that'll start at the end of August?
That's, that's our, that's our hopeful start.
Okay.
Al, are they gonna come back in, are the cleaners coming back to clean?
Yes, we're hoping, we're hoping...
After the controls?
We're hoping after the controls and that we'll clean it, then we just come in and do a wipe down for you that we've already cleaned, and then hopefully that, when that gives us some time frame, they'll allow us back into the jail to finish that mold radiation. Any other questions? Okay. The next one is the Grimes County Justice Center. We just had a meeting. So our, our chillers get delivered Friday morning. I'll be over there. We, our next step is to get it dried in ASAP. And then the mezzanine deck, we hope, will be there, and we can start pouring the third week of August for the mezzanine.
Go ahead and ask me what a mezzanine is.
No.
Okay.
Well, you can share with the other commissioners.
So it's just the mezzanines for the HVAC stuff. It sits on top of the building. That's, that's where I'll be most of the time. But...
On top of the building.
But this one is, this one is conditioned, so unlike the older one over there, it gets really hot. It's moving right along. We're at 57 days, rain delays. Everything's moving along smoothly for the projects.
Can, can you tell me once again when you think the mock-up will be completed?
Uh, we're having a delay. We're having a delay on getting our rock in, so we hope in the next couple of weeks, but that's not guaranteed with the shipping and everything that's going on right now.
Okay.
Isn't that what they said, a couple of weeks because of shipping?
And then the, I guess the substantial completion date's kind of moved to April, right?
That's for now.
Yeah.
For now, but there's a lot of...
No other hit guns.
We can, we can either make that better, or we can make that worse.
One concern that I would have is that if we're having a delay in getting the rock in for us to put the test wall or mock wall up, and then we say, yeah, that's what we want, how quickly will they be able to then order the balance of the rock or a different rock?
As soon as the mock-up is approved by the architect, then they will go ahead and order that completely, because there, there are ways away, there are ways away from putting that rock up on the wall.
Okay. So there shouldn't be, so once we give the go-ahead, there shouldn't be a delay on the new building getting, we shouldn't be waiting on the rock, it should be there. Okay.
That's what the mock wall is about.
That's the purpose.
We're always staying ahead of what they're really doing. Our next, our next goal is to dry it in. Once we get it dried in, then, then we'll be back to, are they doing anything in there?
And I know you're gonna make some comments on this down the road, but I think we just need to say out loud for everybody that it's exciting and there might be a lot of curiosity as to what's going on over there, but please stay outside the chain link fence area because there, as Al and I were discussing this morning, there are overhead things that you might not be looking at. Plus, we don't want to be in the way of the workers and slow them down in any shape, form, or fashion. So, and you, you said that you probably scheduled some designated walkthroughs when we get to a point for people to take a look and see.
So when, when me and Todd, the project man, or the superintendent over there deemed it's okay, we'll give you, we'll give you a date that we'll walk people through and let them look. But besides that, you should stay behind the chain link fence, because right now it's very dangerous, you know? And I don't want us to get sideways with Collier, because that puts his bond and his insurance in jeopardy. And so I've, I've already approached that with Todd, and we're gonna have a couple walkthroughs, maybe when we get dried in, just to let people see what we're doing, and then on down the road when we get closer to completion.
I think that's very smart. Appreciate you setting that up.
Is there any more questions about the Justice Center?
Then we'll go to agenda item, thank you for the update on those three areas. We'll go to agenda item number eight, discuss and take action on historical courthouse interior change order. Mr. Peeler.
Okay, so we're on the interior, and we treat it as a change order.
I'm already chastising him.
You have?
Yep.
Good. So that's the change order, that's the whole interior amount, 321, 368. Now, I know that's, you guys are, you're hanging on okay, but let me follow up with this. 297, 941, 53. 297, 941, 53 is what tax cover in of that bill. Okay? So that leaves me with a balance of 23, 426, 47. That will be...
Say that again.
23, 426, 47.
Thank you.
That, that was already budgeted in the courthouse budget for next year in progress. I seen it coming. So that, that's covered. I mean, it's $23,000 is, is covered. That comes out of my regular courthouse budget, so this interior change order doesn't, there's no money except for what comes out of my budget, and that was planned. And...
Of course, that budget still has to be approved by the court.
Absolutely.
But it's not on a, it's not on an add-on number from a preliminary that's already been presented?
No, it is already been presented with that project.
Correct, okay.
And I needed an approval from the court, because if I don't, I gotta stop them tonight, so. But I thought with that number, it was pretty good. It, it was the cheapest out of three. 1.1, 501, and 362. Or 321, sorry.
So this might, this figure makes the project complete.
Done.
Wow.
Done.
Well, except for the outside staircase.
Done, except for my maintenance of the staircase and, and stuff that's already been looked at by myself. I know the staircase is 11,000. That's already in my proposed budget for next year as a project. But the building itself, it will be done.
Inside and out.
Yes, inside and out.
Yeah, the insured part from Harvey, the Harvey damage.
Yeah, yeah, it will be done. I gotta talk to John C. about that after the meeting, but yes, I'm putting this baby to rest, honey.
Well, a tax rate to close it, too.
Tax rate to close it, too. I've outweighed him.
So this number does not include the outside stairway, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
There's a side note on the left. If you see, it's 11,000.
Yes, I see that.
Judge, if there's no additional questions, I'd make a motion to approve the historical courthouse interior change order as reported by Mr. Al Peeler.
Second. There's a motion before the court on agenda item number eight by Commissioner Cox, second and by Commissioner Mallett. Is there further discussion on the change order? Hearing not all, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? That motion carries. It'll be good for another 125 years. Thank you, Al, very much.
At least 13. Commissioner Cox, Commissioner Mallett, before you guys run out, I gotta talk to you about two issues, the emails that I sent to you that I haven't got to talk to you about. Do I have to see the joint run out tonight? I got two things to talk to you about.
We'll go to agenda item number nine, Lucy Ibada, Grimes County Elections Administrator. Agenda item number nine, a review and approval of eligible precinct presiding election and alternate presiding judges for appointment of the 2020-21 election year. I understand you want to table that?
Morning. Yes, I do.
Okay. When do you think you'll have that information for us?
So Monday, August 10th is when we meet with our election committee. After that date, I'll, I'll get this sure today.
Get it back on the agenda?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
Did some scheduling to get that done.
We'll go to agenda item number 10, discussion regarding termination of contract between Grimes County and Votec Software and Services effective 9/30/2020.
Okay, so this is just purely an update for you guys. A few weeks ago, we talked about the fact that we were going from a voter registration system that we paid almost 12 grand a year for, going to the free system, which is offered by the state called TEAM. So what we're gonna be doing now is, this is the first step to get that started. We have already gotten a timeline from the state. We are now terminating our contract with Votec, and we'll be done with Votec by September 30th. Mr. Foltz, our attorney, has also looked at the contract and agreed that termination, that our timeline is perfect, we don't face any penalties or anything like that. The termination letter, an email was sent, the termination letter will be sent certified mail today. So by the end of this month, we'll be fully operational in TEAM. By the end of September 30th, we will be done with them and have no other costs with this program, starting October 1.
And I just have to ask this out loud. Switching from Votec to TEAM, in no way is going to affect the ease and operation of the general election November 3 of this year?
It, it will make it easier, yes.
Well, that's not a problem.
Yeah, not a problem. So it doesn't adversely affect it, so we don't have any issues there. It will make it easier for us to process, so we don't have to touch two programs in order to get voter registration done, uploads of early voting history, things like that. Right now, what we're having to do is we're having to both upload and update two different programs in order to satisfy both the contract and the state requirements. Once we go to TEAM, we won't have to do that. It saves us both money and time in order for us to do this, and we can, you know, kind of look at our budget next year where we can utilize that money better. But, and for November, it will not touch it, it doesn't hurt it. If anything, it makes it a little bit simpler for us to do things.
So are there any, any security concerns with regard to our evaluation? Are they enhanced? Are we jeopardized in any way by changes?
It's a little different subject than what we're talking about right now, but no. When it comes to Votec or TEAM, there was no security issues or, or anything like that. Our server is set up just fine. The way we, the firewalls that we have set up for voter registration and how we operate it actually exceeded what they expected to get with the county on our side and with our budget and with our IT setup. They were actually very surprised with that.
Because of timelines, and because the governor has blessed us with an additional week of early voting, and now we're starting off October the 13th. Are you still updating records that the folks will be verifying voters? When they come in to vote, those records that your attendees will be checking to make sure they're on the voter rolls, when does that updating stop?
So we have until October 5th to get the rolls ready to go. October 5th is our cutoff for registration for the November election.
And is that an SOS?
That's an SOS date, Secretary of State date, yes. It is the actual cutoff. Now, right now, we're required by law to update every day, so we process every day, no matter what. So once October 5th occurs, anything that's received by that date will be date stamped and filed for latter entries, so that we can process those, because anything received after that, we can't actually do. We have until close of business. That day, we actually stay up until 5:00 instead of 4:30 to ensure that we have everything processed.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that everything is gonna fit with what we're required to do with the early voting that was added to us.
It's a tighter timeline than what we're normally used to, so we're normally used to a two-week timeline to get everything done. This is going to have us, have to do everything a little bit quicker, but it's no different than any other election. We know ahead of time, we've gotten well over 30 days notice. We just have to prep it a little bit differently.
And our confidence in TEAM is that it will stay up and running?
Yes. I mean, TEAM, Votec, no matter what program you use, when pressure's put on it for every county to touch during a big election, you're going to have issues. There's, there's no way to prevent those. When you put a lot of weight on a system, there's gonna be some hangups here and there. Over the past three elections, we have not had any issues. Last year with the previous EA, Rebecca Duff, she didn't have any issues other than the, an internet connection going down with the county, something going wrong with TEAM having to be taken down and updated. That's normal, that's accounted for. We know those things happen. But with any system, it could go down, and you don't foresee it whether you pay 13 grand or 12 grand, or you pay nine. So there's always that caveat that there could be something happening. We don't foresee any issues, though.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, guys. No, that's it.
I'm done. I don't want the commissioners on.
Any other questions, guys? Any other questions, guys? And just a reminder, this is just to kind of give you guys an update on where we're at, okay? Thanks, guys.
Thank you. We'll go to agenda item number 11. Harry Walker, road and bridge engineer, requests authorization to go out for bids on annual contracts as follows. Flexible base, contract hauling, contract bridge labor, tree trimming, contract mowing, fuel coverage. Seven items there.
Good morning again.
Good morning.
These are our annual contracts. Go out for this time of year, every year. Nothing truly changed. I'll get the ads running next week and have bids in before the end of September. So, October 1st, our contracts expire a little later and go.
I move to authorize road and bridge to go out for bids for the annual contracts presented.
Second.
There's a motion before the court on agenda item number 11 by Commissioner Mallett, seconded by Commissioner Walker. Is there further comment or discussion? Hearing not all, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Motion carries, agenda item number 12. Consider and take action to approve the following replat in precinct number one. King Oak, Section 1, Lots 7 through 9, located in the Gwynn Morrison survey abstract 326, as recorded in volume 1204, page 197 of the GCRPR. Also, King Oak, Section 1, Lots 117 through 119, located in the Gwynn Morrison survey abstract 326, as recorded in volume 1204, page 197 of the GCRPR. And the third item is to be tabled for now.
Yes.
Okay, sir?
These are the replats we just had a public hearing on a few minutes ago. Just to remind you, the first one, which is lots 7R and 9R, they are two families combining three lots to make two. Again, they have met all our criteria, and we are recommending that this replat be approved.
I move to approve the replats presented, except for King Oak, Section 2, Lots 256 and 257. Second. There's a motion before the court on agenda item number 12 by Commissioner Mallett, seconded by Commissioner Dobianski. Is there any further discussion? For clarity, the King Oak, Section 1, King Oak, Section 1, or what we're voting on, King Oak, Section 2, has been tabled. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? That motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Walker. Sir? Well, did you not have, didn't you do both of them?
We need to have a motion for each.
Oh, we do, all right. Then we'll go back to the drawing board. Is there a motion on the King Oak, Section 1, Lots 117 through 19? So, move.
Second.
There's a motion before the court on the, on agenda item number 12, the second item, King Oak, Section 1, Lots 117 through 119, by Commissioner Mallett, seconded by Commissioner Walker. Is there further discussion? Hearing not all, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Motion carries, and again, the third item there on agenda 12 is tabled.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll go to County Judge Joe Faugh, the agenda item number 13. Discuss and take action on items related to the Corona virus relief fund. MJ, are you out there? Okay. Do you want to come in and share what knowledge you have about expenditures and allowances and issues?
So, I'm not, I'm not sure Talita saw this or not, so I'm here to do it. It's here for the policy that the government requested we draft.
Oh, okay.
It's been through the county attorney's office.
This was on the reimbursement, okay.
Yes, and I added the two words of medicine that you wrote in. Otherwise, it's the same as what you saw.
Just to remind the court, because we had established a protocol for our employees, when they were exposed or feeling symptoms, we were saying that they needed to be tested, and we had some concerns as to whether they would be tested because they might experience out-of-pocket medical expenses or things that were not covered by the county-provided insurance. So, this, we requested this. We, Talita Coleman, our HR director, put this policy together with the help of others. It's been reviewed by our county attorney, and that is a good addition, that out-of-pocket medical, that clarifies. But this was to encourage our employees that if they felt symptoms or if they felt they were exposed, to go ahead and go through the testing, and it wouldn't be any financial burden to them. Because this is a coronavirus relief fund, because it's our interpretation of the fund, MJ, that those out-of-pocket expenses that the county may reimburse, we can then go back to the CARES Act, and we can be reimbursed for those expenses, correct?
As a category one, yes.
As a category one. So, our county attorney, is it okay if we, should we vote on this, or we just accept it as written?
It's entirely up to you. The last action you took was, you approved it, and then you authorized Mary to come up with a policy. So, if you want to approve the policy, you can. If you want to say it looks consistent with what we expected and move on, you can do that also.
I'm all about moving on, but I don't want to, I don't want to diminish the responsibility of the court. Are we okay to move on, or would you like to put it to a vote?
Well, I can make the motion.
That's fine, go ahead.
I, I make the motion that we approve the Corona virus employee expense reimbursement policy, and it be added to our Grimes County personnel policy.
Second. There's a motion before the court on agenda item number 13, partially by Commissioner Walker, seconded by Commissioner Dobianski to approve the coronavirus employee expense reimbursement policy. Is there further discussion? Hearing not all, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? That motion carries, so we will have that. And if you would remind, even though we have a termination date on this, if you would have, get with Talita, and have an approval date that we've done this, even though it's retroactive, back to March 1. Thank you, ma'am. Okay, what else?
Any other questions on the fund?
I have a question. I have noticed that a couple of counties have been able to assist their ISDs with some of the funds, and there have been various ways they've been able to assist those ISDs with funds. From one, one, one county bought a school bus and then retrofitted the school bus, so it's a mobile, moving hotspot, so that they can put it in different locations where, I guess, when they're doing home studies, they can make a particular neighborhood better internet access. There's another county that was able to provide funding to the ISDs that was going to allow them to purchase, or help the school district, purchase iPads or other, I'll say laptops, I don't know that for sure, but so they could get online to do some of these studies. Is there a way that Grimes County can utilize some of the funding that we have to assist our ISDs in that capacity? And if we did, what category do you think that funding would come out of?
So, yes, we can assist them more than likely, depending on those kinds of projects you just described, they're gonna fall in that four, five, six category.
Which is a burden to us.
Provided how we get that bar 1, 2, 3. Remember, our goal needs to be, get as much as we can in categories 1, 2, 3 right now, so that we know what we have to utilize in categories 5 and 6. So, we need, we still need a few more projects. One of the things, we, we know if it has anything to do with like health and safety kinds of issues. Is there anything the schools need so that they can get their doors open in terms of sanitation equipment or things like that, that I think we could put in the 1, 2, 3 category to help get that number up? If we get enough of those, maybe we can get a, a mobile bus or a mobile hotspot or something.
Well, I intend to call for a meeting with our superintendents for each of the ISDs. I don't know if I can do it collectively or independently, but I want to get some of their ideas and concerns or needs, and then I want to bring it back to the court, let the court review those and see what we can do. But, and I'd probably invite you, MJ, to sit in that meeting with us.
I keep my eye on some things. I'm attending some webinars, I'm reading whatever's coming out there. There's movement under the HEROES Act, which obviously has not passed yet, but there's a lot of discussion. If y'all have a pool with our, you know, our state reps, see what we can do to, in that CARE, in that HEROES Act, to get some of these restrictions looked at. That's, I know they're trying to work some of that in, but I do feel like we are fairly restricted. It would be nice if we could get that 75-25, split east of it. That is not, that is not a nationwide requirement.
No, it's a state deal.
It's a state deal, and, yeah.
May I, may I speak to what you were describing and the questions that I presented to you? And I was waiting on strategic plan updates, so this is part of that also. In a meeting that Commissioner Mallett and I attended on Zoom with emergency management, it was with the hospital, NISD, the city, and we're now inviting the nursing homes also. In those updates, we did talk about the testing in order to help better serve ISDs. Once schools open, they can only inform a parent that a child may have been exposed, and that's where that testing comes in. And we've reached out to the local hospital that once an issue, an alert goes out from the school, that the parents can then take them to have testing. And we talked about St. Joseph or some other provider providing testing maybe once a week, you know, on a regular basis, so parents can then go in. And that will help cover some of this 1, 2, and 3.
It'd be a category one. If we had, you know, we can pay for testing, that's definitely a category one. I think that serves the students very well.
And we also talked about literature. The hospital was willing to supply us pamphlets, advertising our info, information that we can provide to the schools and to the cities that can go out maybe in mailers to the counties, which, I mean, to the citizens, which also covers 1, 2, and 3.
Right, if we're doing any type, like the, the walk-up site that we have arranged for, is it next week or the week after?
Tuesday, Wednesday.
Any advertisement related to that is covered as a, it would go as a category one as well.
Because I think we've placed a full-page ad in the examiner.
Absolutely, and that would be a category one because it's advertising that medical, the testing sites. I would think any printed literature that has to do with health and safety, we could, we could put that in as a category one as well.
And, and that was some of the things that they talked about that maybe needed to help inform the community of what to do next. You know, now the school has opened, what do we do now? Because we knew that, I mentioned also the bus before, and we knew that it fell into 4, 5, and 6. It was medical expenses, public expenses, and payroll expenses that we're having a problem meeting. But the things that we talked about would also help our schools and also help the community as a whole to know what to do next, because people are frantic now as, what do I do now? You know, once they receive these alerts. So, the school did want to meet again and talk about some of these things, about the devices, and how they wanted you to know that they are not receiving what they said they've been receiving from the state in terms of devices for our children to do online classes at home. So, I just knew that, that we had to meet that larger portion before we could move on to the other portions. But they are certainly wanting to sit down and talk to you about what they did receive, where they're lacking at, and how maybe we could possibly help them. So, Judge, that's a great idea to, you know, reach out to all of the districts, because we only had that one on the line.
So, where we are right now in this 75-25 split, and I apologize, I don't have y'all an update for this week. It hasn't been that much activity, but I can get it updated and get it to you. I don't have anything in there yet for recouping any of our labor, which is a category 3, which will help drive that number up. So, I received a few timesheets from CAT. I don't have anything official, but I can pretty much ballpark our EMC. Pretty much, that'd be 100% of what he's been doing. But I haven't gotten anything from you guys yet. So, y'all have been attending meetings left and right, I know. If y'all could put something down on a piece of paper so that I could at least get some ballpark.
But we're elected officials, so...
That's okay, we get to get reimbursed for that.
Really?
If you have been doing things with meetings, my understanding is if you are employed by this county and you have been in a capacity where you are, not reacting, but you're a part of the COVID relief effort.
But what, what about the restrictions that they put in if it's already in this year's budget, i.e. 2020, it's budgeted for?
From what I'm seeing right now, they are, that, that is not a restriction on personnel. It's on everything else, but I will get 100% guidance, but I don't have anything to work with yet. So, what I'd like to do is say, this is, this is our, this is what we would like to submit under personnel, and let them bless it or kick it back. But I don't want to put that in our 1, 2, 3 number until I get it blessed.
Okay.
But if, I, I just don't know what-
But you need something to bless, so we need to get in there.
I need something to bless or not. I, I know that we can, I, I've been hearing and seeing from other counties, they are, they are submitting for their EMC. They are submitting, it's not just their health personnel. But I just want to, I want to try.
But, okay, but the true test, submitting's one, getting reimburses, something else.
Exactly, but I have to be able to submit, to be able to say. But I, I would like to be able to say, y'all been to all these meetings and, and try and get a piece of that. That'll, that could possibly be a category 3, and-
Good.
All we can do is try.
Very good.
So, I have a question on some of the proposed expenditures. To your knowledge at this point, I know it's kind of fuzzy, but have you been made aware of anything that might be disqualified?
No. We haven't, because we have not, we have not submitted yet. I just, yesterday, got the, the how-to. So, the, the website is open, and we will submit everything through the Tedom website. It's quite a lengthy process, it'll probably take me two days to upload everything that we've already done. But, once we hit, we're at the point, we've received the 205,000, what we've spent, plus the two fiber optic projects, that's gonna put us at or just a little bit over what we've already received. So, I felt like it was a good time to go ahead and let's try and submit and see if anything gets kicked back, so that we know how to proceed.
Good. Actually, we don't want surprises.
Exactly.
And the hospital administrator did say that they are working the numbers and seeing what they could do to reduce the cost as, such as making it a outside, you know, how you see in the larger urban areas where you- you see in the larger urban areas where you pull up and it's outside. You're not actually coming in the hospital. But they would get those numbers back over to us at the end or the beginning of next week, at the end of this week or beginning of next week.
MJ, thank you.
Thank you.
Agenda Item Number 14. Consider and take action regarding the burn ban. I'm authorized County Judge to signatory commissioners. Certainly needs your input. We've had Ray and David, if you've got any advice on that, because I think that, I don't know, the South end of the county's received, I think more rain than North End, but when you go to the Bedi's area, they got dumped on Sunday or so, but I don't know what happened over in Iola. I don't know how dry you guys are.
Been missing quite a bit, but the fire, the fire chief there says we're not, not quite ready yet necessarily to put on.
Okay. Anybody else have input?
There's, there's several surrounding counties that have those burn bans in place, but it's not doing the, what we usually see, the domino effect where they all fall off suit as of yet. So I am monitoring that, but right now, again, yes, as you said, we had not a lot of rain. Some areas got a lot, but we've been getting off and on some steady rain, some more projected even today, but a long-range projection is we're likely going into a dry period. But a lot depends on what happens for these depressions that are coming in in the Gulf, too. So that's the unknown factor.
Well, we're meeting again next Wednesday, so if commissioners are in agreement, we'll take no action today. Review it again next time up. All right. No action on Agenda Item Number 14. Number 15, receiving. Any updates on the strategic plan? Commissioner Walker, did you have something?
I did. I, I wanted to piggyback back to the discussion we had. Mr. Lilly, Commissioner Mallett were, and I were all involved in a Zoom meeting with the hospital, all of our stakeholders, such as the city, the NISDs. And we decided that we would do a twice-a-month update on what the status of our hospitals EMS services are seeing. Some presenting them our needs and hearing from the school systems and the nursing homes as to what they may need. There has been an uptick in the ambulance service in our area, where we've gone from average of maybe 16 to 13 calls a day. They've seen as many as 32 calls COVID-related here within our county at the peak of, of everything after the 4th of July. So there was a time that they brought in a fifth ambulance to our county to service our citizens. So it was all good news. We saw some encouraging reports, reports that we've never seen before. But they also have a new director of EMS services who is really on the ball on presenting what's happening in our county. And so we're back now, I guess, to the fourth, four ambulances that are running. They are keeping that extra ambulance, which was a transport. They're not doing as many transports from TDC as they were. So we're doing really good. Our hospital capacity, bed capacity is still really great. If they see anybody that needs to be transferred, they transfer. But I think they said they had about two people here locally that they're treating, but it, it was a good meeting. We had two doctors, Dr. Gibson and Dr. Katie Blaylock, which is here in Navasota, to advise us on what they're seeing here locally in our community. So Commissioner Mallett, did you have anything you want to add to what you might have heard the other day?
Y'all think you covered it pretty well.
So I did want the citizens, citizens to know that we are visiting. We are trying to stay on top of what events and our situation here in Grimes County, so that Mr. Lilly will also have his input, too, in case he needs to add to what the hospitals, how they can service better.
I do have an update from the animal shelter also. At our board meeting last night, we agreed to put together a foster program for animals in the county. We are asking for volunteers to come forward and foster animals. We're getting a lot of calls. We don't have a place to go with these animals since we don't have the shelter built yet, but we're going to try to put together a foster program to take care of these animals. And we have the agreement with Aggie Land and Brian. They will do the, and I've got that paperwork we're going to get, get to them today to put in place for the low-cost bay neutering program. As a foster, the Grimes County Animal Rescue will pay for the food and the vetting of these animals and help to get these animals placed after we get them into foster care and get them adopted somewhere. So if you feel like you want to do fostering of these animals that, that will be coming in, please let us know. Give us a call. And the other thing I have to mention is the food pantry here in Anderson, again. Anybody that needs that food, please come get it tomorrow.
Anything else on the strategic plan? Hearing no comments. We'll go to Agenda Item Number 16. That would be a motion to adjourn. Is there one?
I'm adjourned.
That's it.
There's a motion before the court on Agenda Item Number 16 by Commissioner Dobianski, seconded by Commissioner Walker. Is there further discussion? Hearing not all. In favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? This meeting is adjourned.